I call this regular board meeting, Thursday, June 29, 2023. I will Dakota Board of Education to order. Mr. D, please call and ready?
Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. Bodie.
President.
Ms. Casper.
Here.
Ms. Schaefer.
Here.
Ms. O'Connor.
Here.
And Mr. Bissard, our COO, is standing in. Welcome to the table, standing in for our Superintendent Armenton, Superintendent Mr. Goldman, and the same thing. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. D. Discussion?
Yes, I just want to note that I will not be approving the agenda due to the time of delivery.
Would you please call him?
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. Bodie.
No.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
We're moving to number three. I'll take a motion to hold an executive session to consider the employment of a public employee per Ohio Vice Code 121.22G1. Motion? Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer.
No. I'm going to adjourn to the executive session.
Thank you, Mrs. Bodie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Call the rule, please.
Ms. Bodie.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Will we adjourn to the conference room? And we'll be back with you.
Yeah, sounds like going, man.
Good, man. I gotta go hang out.
Isaac out there campaigning.
You what?
I got one.
I thought you were telling him to put him on the bottom of his shoes.
Just not enough. I don't want you to know that.
Yeah, I'm gonna leave him in my car so I remember.
Okay. Phone's on silent, everyone. Mrs. Schaefer, would you like to use the Pledge of Allegiance once we get going?
Sure.
Hold on. I'll bring us back into order. We'll move to the Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. Schaefer, would you please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board President comments. I wanted to say thank you. We've been very busy with our superintendent search and thank you first of all to my fellow board members and to Mr. Zink. It's been a lot of time and energy and really appreciate everyone's assistance and flexibility on times. Also want to say thank you to our community. We made many opportunities for our community to be involved in that process with the thought exchange and also some events that we held the night of interviews and had a great turnout for the meet and greet and for the question and answer and really appreciate everyone's time and the passion that we've heard around finding the right leader for our community. We are going to move to Superintendent comments standing in. Mr. Passarge, I think you probably had something on our last listening session in safety grants?
Yes. You got safety? Okay, great. Yes, at the last board meeting, there was questions about the cost for transportation, to provide transportation to all students. And we wanted to talk about that. We are projected for this upcoming school year to have 183 yellow bus routes. And if we were to look at providing transportation to all students, both Lakota and non-public schools, it would be somewhere in the range of 221 routes. That's where we were back in the 2008 timeframe when we had about 18,000 students. So we're close to that number right now. So for estimating purposes, we estimated that we would have to add an additional 38 buses to the system at a cost of about three and a half million to four million dollars to add to all students regardless of grade level and regardless of school attendance. And that would be the annual operating cost to do that. Those would be subject to annual escalators as we move forward through the five-year forecast because there'd be an operational expense from the general fund. But in addition to that, we'd also have some one-time costs for the construction and expansion of the parking lot. We are at full capacity with our bus lot. We did an expansion a few years ago to accommodate for the number of vans that we've brought on and our maintenance vehicles and some additional buses when we brought back freshmen. But we would estimate we would probably need another $4 million in one-time cost to expand the parking lot. And a lot of that would be for the infrastructure piece, for the lights, for the electrical plugins for the diesel engines so they don't freeze during the winter, the fencing to do that. So we would estimate around $4 million. And also it would impact, there's a couple baseball fields that are used by local youth organizations that they would lose those fields back by behind Liberty Junior. Any questions about transportation costs?
I don't know if anyone else has.
Yeah, I'm having part-time hearing.
I'm not.
I can talk louder. Is that better?
That's better. We're getting some kind of a word.
Weird feedback. Mambo.
So that was not about the safety grants. That was about the cost if we were to provide transportation for all students. So if I captured it correctly, and if I didn't, please correct me, 38 more buses, 3.5 million in annual operating cost per year, and four million in a one-time cost for the parking lot and infrastructure. Is that correct?
Correct.
He's, he's, you said three and a half to four million for annual.
For annual, in that, it would, we'd have to round it all out, figure it out, but based on what we've done in the past, that would be in that range.
And how many students would that, how many additional students would that be?
Well, if we looked at all 17,000 of our students that provide, and there's probably another three to three and a half, or three, 3,000 to 3,000 non-public students that could be eligible for.
Chris, does that include all private schools?
Yes. All eligible private schools.
Right. K-12.
K-12, correct.
Do you want to explain eligible?
For eligible, ORC defines eligibility as being within a 30-minute bus ride of the school of attendance. So if your student went to Endeavor Elementary, whatever non-public school would have to be within a 30-minute bus drive from Endeavor Elementary to their non-public school during the time of day that you typically traveled to school. So if it's under that 30-minute threshold, it would qualify for transportation under Ohio Vise Code.
Any other questions?
I would like to make a comment.
Let's do questions first and then we'll get to comments. Any other questions on what Mr. Passarge said, Mr. D?
Yeah. You said to, to do that, we need 38 more buses. But do you have drivers for that, for those buses?
Yes, you would assume that you would need 38 more drivers as well. We don't have 38 drivers right now.
Anybody else? Otherwise, Mrs. Bodie, go ahead.
So in the past, I voted no on canceling the bus routes because I feel strongly that we should provide the busing for those who qualify for the busing. But, and then just hearing this gentleman speak tonight, I really think that I just, we're doing a disservice to the people in our community that are paying taxes. And again, I think we should be able to provide, now it's going to cost money. It's not free. So I think as a board, we should be able to figure out where we can find this money to provide for this busing. And we would have to look at our finances and see where we can move things around. The other thing that I mentioned, and I spoke with Adam about this today too, I think once we go, we have, we have a, the master facilities plan right now on our, on our plate as well. So we've got, you know, two different things that are gonna, that need more money that we would potentially have to go to the community about. And I think the community, you know, I would like to know, you know, not what's more important, but what would they like to focus on more? The busing for the community? Or would we want to do the master facilities plan? But then within that, with the master facilities plan, as Adam mentioned, we're going to have less buildings. So that's less need for the 38 additional buses. We also could have property that we would not need to purchase to provide for the parking and the heating for the buses because it's cold in the winter. They have to provide, we would have to pay for the installation, right, of the heating equipment that you plug into the bus if I'm understanding that properly. But we could use, I mean, this could be a short-term price that we pay potentially. And then once we get the master facilities plan accomplished and whatnot down the road, then it will actually be less. And, and it would be more cohesive budget financially.
Other comments?
For me, my concern comes in, and you're right, it's heartbreaking to hear their stories, but for, for me, the concern comes in is that we are having trouble, correct me if I'm wrong, transporting our own students because of bus drivers, canceled routes. So I, I don't know how we can commit to transporting private school children when we can't always transport our own students. Do we have all of our routes covered for the fall yet?
As of right now, we're about three drivers short, but we have a number in training. We think we will be there for the start of school. And to give you some perspective on our struggles this past school year, throughout the year, we have 2,394 routes that were canceled throughout the school year. That, and we had 28 days total throughout the entire day where we had every route covered. That was due to lack of drivers.
Lack of drivers. And if we have less buildings, we don't have less students. So we still have to transport, even when we do the facilities, right?
There might be some efficiencies for operation to transport if you have.
We still have to transport the same amount of students.
Right. But if you have fewer facilities, you may have less operating costs. So you might be able to, instead of achieving those operating costs from the facilities, repurpose that for transportation perhaps, is my understanding of what that was about.
And I, I struggle with, I struggle with busing high schoolers because of that we are paying a driver and operating a bus. And we know from experience that they're not riding those buses. Maybe a little bit the start of the sophomore year, but we see empty buses when we had busing at the high school. Empty buses pulling out of Lakota East and West to take kids home that had, you know, an entire bus with four kids on it. And, and I feel like that is a, not a good financial use of our resources. But that's just my.
Yeah. So we talked about this also in the finance committee. And so I think for me, there's a couple pieces and some have already been covered, but when we used to provide busing, then we would get a lot of feedback that we were wasting taxpayer dollars because they would see buses pulling out of West or East with four kids. But I also recognize it's a real hardship for some people. And so there was a time where I remember Chris doing a survey and saying, sign up if you're gonna do the bus so we can route more appropriately. And when we did that, everyone signed up just in case Johnny's car broke down, there would be a bus for him. And we still had to have all these empty buses. And so it did not have the effect we were hoping of saving money. So something that we've talked about and desired to do, like I, I would love to have a shared cost. So for those who are actually going to use it and provide the service, you know, they pay a small fee, but then you're only gonna sign up if you're actually using it. And we pay a portion of that. So then you're actually providing busing at that level for those who would use it. But legislatively, we've not been able to do that. And that, it, it's interesting to me that it's basically the legislation is you either have to provide it and pay 100% or not provide it. And there's not sort of a compromise position, which I feel like would be most effective. So I would love to see us go more of the legislative advocacy and trying to change that legislation to see if there's a way for us to do a cost sharing on this because it helps eliminate some of that hardship while simultaneously providing the service in an efficient way and not wasting taxpayer money. And I'll also say when the discussion of reallocating resources, we've talked about that historically. And at least the last time we sort of got community input on that, it was if you're going to be investing additional money or reallocating funds within the district, we would rather that be put towards lowering the class sizes than transportation. So I don't know if that sentiment has changed, but I know that there was more of an emphasis, at least in the past, on class sizes, what people felt were gonna have more of an impact than the transportation piece. So those are my thoughts.
Mr. D?
Yes. My thought on this is I know the financial aspect of it is critical. However, I still see that we're handicapped as in, even if you want to turn things around, and we're able to, to have funds to take care of this, we still don't have drivers. Which I think is the, is even the hardest part of this than the resources we're talking about. And I also want to like put a little highlight on master facility because if you don't plan, if we don't plan on taking care of our buildings and take care of that now, while it is still. it is still usable, a time will come, it's gonna be worse. So it's good, I, I was broken when I heard this, this gentleman's talk, I, I mean, it touched me so, so much, and I felt like, what can I do to help, you know? But the thing is, I think it's the, it's not the finances that is even more difficult right now, getting the drivers, because even right now, we can't even transfer, I mean, transport all our kids because of shortage of drivers. So it is good for the community to know that it's something that we have to look into seriously, but if we get to a point where there are things we cannot do, I don't know. So, but it's a very important thing that we need to look into.
Many valid points around the table, all the way around the table, actually. I will say, Mrs. Schaefer, I feel like I have been fighting this issue legislatively since I came on the board, but I'm not above trying it again, and what we've been told, at least in the past, is there not, there isn't an impact on a lot of other districts, and so the political will to make a change to this process is not there, where there could be a user fee, which is what we're talking about.
Right.
But I also don't think that there is anything lost by trying to have that conversation in our upcoming legislative visits with our legislators. Is there something that's changed in the process that's worth conversation? I do think there are some, and toward reallocation as opposed to new dollars, I appreciate that you're thinking that way, Mrs. Bodie, I agree with you that that's how it would need to be considered, and I do think that the master facilities plan, the whole transportation piece is going to change a lot, and it's a good conversation for us to keep having. I did ask, after we had several people come and speak tonight, I did ask Mr. Passard if he would follow up with them and to see if there are any other options that can be considered, so perhaps you could get back to us at a future date on the families that spoke tonight. I know this is an ongoing issue that you deal with, and try to be sensitive to what's going on with families, so thank you for that. Anything else on transport, and thank you for coming back with that information that we'd requested. Anything else on transportation? Mr. Zink, your comments, and I think you were going to address the safety grants.
Yeah, I was going to talk about the safety grants. First, I wanted to welcome Mr. Passard to the, to the table.
To the big.
Hide in the back anymore, so I hope they're not missing him too much back there. Yeah, last meeting, we talked about the safety grants, and I wanted to follow back up with that. We did talk about it briefly in the finance committee meeting yesterday. We have received three grants, total is two million one hundred and ninety thousand dollars, and that was over three different grants, two of them federal, and one of them was through the state. So those, those will be on the fiscal twenty-four appropriations coming up, the temporary appropriations coming up later. Any questions on those?
And when do those, what's the deadline on spending that?
The OCC, there, there's two parts to the OCC which involve the infrastructure improvements for safety, the first round has to be spent by the end of 2024, and the second round is the end of 2025. We're well on our way to spending that money.
Yeah, we have some badges getting installed at Central right now, I believe throughout the district, it'll be coming.
Yep.
Great.
What reason could we not use some of that money and allocate it to safely get our students to other schools?
It's, it's pinpointed towards, there's restrictions on what you can use that money for. It's, the OCC money is strictly for facilities and improving your facilities, so that's the only thing it can be used for.
Okay.
Not transportation, but only improvements to your physical facilities.
So other money that we have budgeted for safety and facility, or, I mean, I would have to really look at the numbers in front of me, but if, other, other money that is allocated for that area we could use for safety, and that, that comes from our taxes that, you know, that we forecast on the five-year, on the five-year forecast, sorry, I'm just thinking out loud here. So I'm, I'm just wondering if there's money that's allocated that we could use that money to actually cover those expenses, and then push that money and put it in a different bucket to make that work.
Ms. Bodie has definitely been paying attention at the finance committee meetings. This is like, what we, we are constantly talking about stuff like this, how we can maximize and, and repackage and use things in, in better ways, so I like, I like the way you're thinking, I mean, it's.
But we do need to be careful that we're following the guidelines and parameters on our.
Absolutely, we have to stay within parameters always.
That was the P.S. to that.
Yes, yeah, but we do, we have candid conversations like that pretty regularly in our finance committee, so, on how to do things, something, any other questions on the safety? Okay, something else that I wanted to just kind of add, as we've kind of come to the fiscal year-end, sitting through the listening session tonight, somebody made the comment about the riding the bus experience and how the, the child, that, that experience that they have, and it made me think of when I used to ride the bus, and all of the experiences we have, and I just wanted to give a shout-out to all of our, not just teachers, but our support staff, SROs, bus drivers, custodians, cafeteria workers, everybody makes an impact on these kids, so it takes, it takes all of us to, to do this.
Absolutely. I did want to make one more comment. You had talked about transporting our kids, and I, I understand what you're saying, I think that I would characterize all of our community's kids as kids that we need to worry about, and I understand the concern toward that. I, I think what you're referring to is more toward those that we are required by law to transport.
Right, to transport, yeah.
All of them are our community's kids, so.
Yes, I, I, I'm certainly not dissing people who don't send their kids here.
Right.
I mean, I'm just, but we are required by law to transport, but K, K.
And, and I would appreciate us continuing to look at ways to try to do that for the most students possible. Thank you, anything else under comments?
One more comment, I just want to thank all five board members, especially Mrs., Ms. O'Connor and Ms. Casper for the work on the superintendent search. We have put a lot of work into that. There's, I was told at the beginning of May that it was going to be a lot more of my time than I really anticipated, and that was an understatement. It has been a tremendous undertaking, and we're really working hard, and I appreciate everybody being able to work through this as a team, and I feel like we're doing, doing a nice job there, so thank you all for that work.
And thank you, Mr. Zink, for all the hats you've had to wear over the past several months, so thank you for your time. All right, board, we'll move to board updates, board policy committee. Are you prepared to handle that, Mr. Passard, to speak about that?
No.
Okay.
We, we do have policy, the next policy committee meeting will be on August eighteenth at ten a.m. for my scheduling update.
I would also like to ask again for an emergency policy meeting in the month of July to address protecting biological girls from biological boys in the bathroom. I truly believe that it is imperative that this is voted on prior to children going back to school this fall, and again, I move to have an emergency meeting, policy meeting to address my motion that was made on four, four twenty-three, where the board said that they would discuss this in policy.
Board, I have a motion on the floor for an emergency policy meeting prior to our August eighteenth meeting, does that characterize?
On four twenty-three? Wait, sorry that I made them.
You were looking for an emergency policy meeting prior to our next meeting?
Yes, yes.
Is there a second? Hearing none, the motion dies. All right, we'll move to community enga, and I'm sorry, we do have several policies on the agenda tonight for second reads, so that'll be coming later under superintendent recommendations, I believe. Community engagement committee, Mrs. Casper, anything?
We don't, have not met since our last meeting, so we, I think our next meeting is August.
Seventeenth at four p.m.
What time?
August seventeenth at four p.m.
I knew it wasn't the same day, yes, seventeenth at four p.m., thank you, Mr. Zink, I knew it was different than the regular day.
Butler Tech, Mrs. Schaefer?
The Butler Tech superintendent was at a conference, so it broke the record for the shortest Butler Tech meeting that existed at fourteen minutes.
Whoa.
So not a lot to report, as you can imagine, but just, and they're continuing to work on the aviation expansion in Middletown, that's on track. The, it looks like with the advanced manufacturing, we're moving forward with hopefully signing a lease with Miami, and then for the bioscience expansion at the Westchester campus, they're still hoping in the governor's budget that more money is put back into the capital plan for career tech education so that we can also work on that expansion. So the first two are in the works, and the third is hopeful based on the capital budget when the state budget is actually put out, so that's where we are.
Any questions for Mrs. Schaefer? Hearing none, we'll move to facilities committee. Mr. Passard, anything?
Yes, our next meeting is scheduled for August eighteenth, correct, Adam?
Two p.m.
Two p.m., August eighteenth.
August eighteenth, two p.m.
Yes, and in that meeting, we will discuss, we have a phone call, a conference call tomorrow with the OCC to look at the timing and requirements with the new updates from the OCC, if we want to do anything through, through them for help or, or funding with that, so we'll get an update on that. Again, we'll review the high school additions, middle school additions, K-5 requirements, get more in details about what we talked about last time, and look at the possible attendance zones, will be discussed, and I've also been approached by a community developer about some kind of land exchange over by East High School as part of our plan as well, so I'll bring that up as well.
Any questions on facilities?
Sorry, I haven't checked my email today, did you email this to us today, what you just discussed?
No.
Okay, can you, would you mind emailing that to me so I have that list?
Yes, no problem, yeah, it'll come out, there's, there's basically a draft of what's gonna be on the agenda for the upcoming meeting, so, it's a preview.
The sooner I, the sooner I get that information, the, the more research I can do, and it would just be very beneficial.
Yeah, of course, yeah, I'll get that out right away.
Have more, have time to understand it.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
If you'll send that to the whole board.
Of course, yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, finance committee, I believe you had a meeting this Wednesday, Mrs. Bodie, Mrs. Schaefer?
We did have a meeting, and Adam went through much of what he is going to go through with the entire board this evening. It was all very thorough, and we appreciated all the effort that Adam's entire team has done to help, especially in, as he's been helping with other things, so, absolutely. And, and I had on here, I was going to discuss the busing, but Chris already talked about it. Also, I wanted to mention that the AOS Award with Distinction, how many times have we won that award?
Ten years in a row.
Ten, ten, okay, good. Approximately eight percent of schools receive that award, and that is fifty-three out of six hundred and eleven, so I say that's a very small minority that receives that award, so that's, that's good, congratulations.
Thank you.
And that, that AOS is Auditor of State, and again, while that's eight percent, that's an annual figure, it is not eight percent of districts that get that for ten years in a row.
Yeah.
So that's even more impressive, given that situation.
Thank you.
Anything else on finance committee?
Something else I would add on the finance committee is the July meeting, we have canceled that meeting, and the next meeting was rescheduled instead of August sixteenth due to the start of the school year, we've moved that to August fifteenth, so that everybody could make it, so. Yeah, we covered a lot of, we covered a lot of material quickly in that meeting, so appreciate everybody being there, and some of the exec, exec team members came to this meeting since it was the fiscal year-end, I appreciated that also.
Gave you a warm-up for tonight.
What's that?
Gave you the warm-up for tonight.
Yeah, right, yeah, I hope I can do okay.
We have confidence in you. All right, we'll move on to legislative. Mr. Passard, do you have anything for Mr. Vogelmann for that, or Mr. Zink?
Mr. Vogelmann did not give me anything to share.
I was gonna share the status of House Bill thirty-three, last, last news is we may be looking at a possible extension, some of the Senate version has been taken in by the House and vice versa, so some of the key items that they're looking at is potentially removing median income, that would make all districts look wealthier, which then could impact, based on the way the funding is, could make our state share decrease perhaps. It does appear at this time that they're trending more toward going with the House version of the funding versus the Senate version, which was more favorable for us, so we'll keep our fingers crossed on, on this coming through, and when the extension is finalized, if they go that route. They are putting in the fiscal twenty-two components, that's one of the reasons in the House version that we would be seeing better income due to that component funding. And then it also did include the restructuring of the Board of Education in the version that they're looking at right now, so that could turn into the workforce, I forget what the name of that was, so, sorry about that. So, another additional thing too is it does include the ed choice going from two hundred and fifty percent of the federal poverty level up to four hundred and fifty, and I believe that number would be a household income of around a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, so, so that is an increase to open up some potential ed choice options for people. So that's what I have at this moment, we stay tuned, hopefully we know sooner rather than later, but it looks like it is kind of headed for a possible extension.
Yeah, because they have until tomorrow.
Tomorrow at midnight, they're, yeah, they're not, they're, they're holding their breath too, I think.
Right.
Mrs. Casper, anything?
No.
All right, and I wanted to let the board know, I'll be in Columbus twice in July for an OSB trustee meeting and also for an OSB nominating committee meeting. Lakota Community Diversity Council, Mrs. Casper and I, we have a planning meeting for that on July nineteenth, and the first meeting is tentatively scheduled for August ninth, and the letters to those who've been invited to be part of this cohort went out today. Any questions on that?
How many people did that end up being, sorry?
Two staff members, two board representatives, and a facilitator, and twenty, twenty, community members, broad spectrum of representation.
So twenty-five people.
Twenty-five altogether.
Thank you. And can you repeat, what is happening on August ninth?
That'll be the first meeting for that group.
Okay, thank you. I have on my schedule that there's a diversity meeting on August eighteenth.
So that would have been the Board Diversity Committee, which has now been disbanded, so that's not, that's canceled now.
And is the diversity meeting open to the public, the committee?
It will be open to the public.
Okay, thank you. August ninth?
Yes.
Okay.
Once we have more information on the time, location, and all that, we will put a public notice out.
Okay, thank you.
Safety committee, Mr. Passard?
We have not met, but again, we're on the eighteenth for the safety committee as well.
Twelve p.m.
Twelve p.m., on the eighteenth.
On the eighteenth.
On the eighteenth. This is not really a safety committee item, but you will see at the next board meeting in July, we will have the MOUs that we have to do each year for the Westchester PD and the Butler County Sheriff. We do the MOU for having their SROs in our buildings, so we'll have that on the agenda, and we'll also have the annual agreement that we have from Butler County Sheriff just for the cost and the stuff associated with having those SROs from Butler County, and we are in our last year of a three-year with Westchester Township.
Any questions or comments on safety?
Question?
Julie?
There was just training that was done in some of our facilities, I understand, this week, was that, did that go well, and?
That, that was all law enforcement-led, we let them use our facilities to do the training. Well, also, there's gonna be coming up at East as well, where the fire department was doing training along with their police department to look at how to get in in active situations to provide medical care to injured during an active situation, so of course, we're great partners with our first responders, let them use our buildings, be familiar with our buildings, so God forbid if there is something that they're familiar with that, and they can come in and, and do that and train, we openly partner with them to do that as much as possible.
Anything else on safety? Move on to business advisory committee, Mr. D and myself, I believe our next meeting is on August twenty-fifth.
Uh-huh.
And the other thing, just a reminder that we're putting out a survey through the chamber, surveying our local businesses to ask what they see as the needs for our kids in terms of career tech and workforce development, so we should have that information back, I believe, by that next meeting. Was there anything else, Mr. D?
No, since now, we know ground meeting, we've not had another meeting yet.
All right, we'll move to the Community Curriculum Advisory Team, the CCAT, board-appointed community representatives to our curriculum team. Their last meeting was June nineteenth, and I believe you attended that, Mr. Zink?
I did, Mr. Passard has a few bullet points to review.
Lori Brown, she is not here tonight, but she sent me some information about the last committee meeting that I'll share, and Adam, since you were there, you can fill in any gaps that I missed, but she said the CA, CCAT meetings will be held every other month moving forward, their meetings will have three main agenda items each month, proactive curriculum review, reactive concern. Proactive curriculum review, reactive concern review and process, recommendations to the curriculum team. For the proactive curriculum review portion, the team is seeking a way to gain input from parents about priority areas for review and trends and concerns that may exist. In order to do this, the team decided to organize a thought exchange and community conversation to gain input. The thought exchange will launch in August as we come back to school. Exchange will be what we are doing, well, in terms of curriculum and what we could approve. It would also ask what questions they may have as a community. The team is hoping the community conversation can happen in late September after curriculum nights. However, this needs to be planned with the Community Engagement Committee itself, so they'll have to look at that. For the reactive portion, the team reviewed an inquiry from what is posted on our Lakota listens page. The team updated the form to support and focus of the team. The team heard it from Jay Hudson about the state report card and what, and they were very appreciative about the information they received. And lastly, the team will meet again in late August or early September, once again, the thought exchange data, when the thought exchange data is ready to review. Anything from your perspective, Adam, that we missed?
No, they also, they put the scheduling out to look into the next meeting. We don't have that meeting scheduled yet, so there will be another public notice coming out for that once we have the time for the next meeting.
I don't remember. Have to look.
Anything else?
No.
Thank you. I do want to note, we'll have to have some conversation. The community, the Community Engagement Team has already set up a curriculum conversation, so perhaps they're talking about the same one. I would think it'd be the same thing.
Just want to make sure it's the same.
Yes.
All right, so we'll follow up on that.
Get some clarification.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else on that?
No.
Mr. Zink, anything from your attendings?
I don't think so.
Okay, thank you.
I do know that they've been having a really good, good meetings. The meetings have been going extremely well. Seems to be very productive, a lot of feedback and the group, the group seems to really be gelling well together, so it's been nice to see.
That's good to hear.
Yeah.
Good. I think they've had two meetings now.
Two.
All right, Board, anything under professional development? Anyone attending anything?
Nope.
I'm constantly improving my skills.
Good to hear.
I mean, yeah, every day I'm learning. I mean, I'm reading, I mean, the financial, the finance committee has really been extremely helpful and, yeah.
Good. Any conferences or webinars or anything else that anybody's participated in? All right. Mr. Zink, the moment we've all been waiting for, your administrative report with the fiscal year end presentation, please.
Thank you. Okay, so this is the big meeting where we do all the financials to close down fiscal year. This year is fiscal year '23, so our fiscal years run from July 1st of each year to June 30th. So, the year that the school year ends, that's our fiscal year. So, on the student side of things, people think of it as like the '22, '23 school year. This is our fiscal year. Mr. Oskley has been huge in this fiscal year end. I've had a huge appreciation for all of the work that he has put in on the budgetary side. We've got Ms. Songer and Ms. Biederman doing the payroll work and couldn't have done it without the team. It has been very big this year. I've been pulled in different directions. So, Ms. Logan, I have a appreciation for when she wasn't there to help me out. I now understand why a little bit, so that has been a good thing. But this-
Let's give them and your team a round of applause.
Yes, yes, definitely. Definitely. We couldn't have picked a more fitting first slide because this fiscal year has been nothing short of amaze the entire way through. It seems like every time we thought we had something going in the right direction, a curve ball hit all the way from the very beginning of August when I took over. So, we have navigated the best we can to try to get through the fiscal year. We had the goal, we worked, we've been working on this as a team, as the exec team, Treasurer's Office team, Board, everybody has been pulling to try to see if we could land a balanced budget this year because we knew this year was going to be tight. So, how did we finish? We ended up finishing with about, with 199.4 million in revenue, which ended up being 1.1 over the projections that we had. We ended up with the expenditures of 198.7 million, which ended up being 1.5 more than we projected. So, this is in the general fund. This is in the comparison to our five-year forecast. One of the things we did review in the Finance Committee meeting is we was trying to get through a lot of this material, but we look forward to the next meeting where we can take a deeper dive because this is kind of how we start prepping and getting better for our planning for the upcoming year. Our spending surplus this year ended up being 642,000. We had, as you see, the expenditures came up a bit more than the revenue did. So, we thought in May it was going to look about like 1.4 million. So, it did come a little bit closer than we had projected in May. We had a few revenues that didn't come through, which will be helpful for fiscal year '24. We were hoping for them and banking on them in fiscal year '23. So, that was something we also had reviewed is we will not be, you know, when we watch these coming in now, we'll, we'll make sure that we're not trending them up for the remaining fiscal years because this will be a one-time cash flow issue. That's one of the problems when the budgets start getting lean is cash flow starts making a big difference. So, ending cash balance for our general fund is 115.9 million. So, that is 0.7 less than expected due to the reasons I just talked about, but it is still positive. We ended with another balanced budget. So, I want to thank everybody for all of their work on helping me accomplish that in the first year because that took a complete team effort trying to get there in a lot of very painful meetings, but I do appreciate all the work we put into that. So, thank you. So, now, when we, when we look at our fiscal year '23 and '24 expenditures, I know this is a little bit hard to see. However, I've got it zoomed in on my screen a little bit. So, fiscal year '23, what you're, what you're seeing is, is now all of these budgets have been set to actual. This, we are done processing checks for the year. This is where we ended up. This is a snapshot of all of Lakota's funds. Now, we do budget at the fund and object level because that aligns with our five-year forecast. Our five-year forecast is broken into object lines, but this is a snapshot at the fund level. So, these are all of our actuals. Once we get through this year, we have the appropriations that'll be coming up for the final, final fiscal year '23. We'll take those with our final revenues. We send that up to the county auditor and that's part of our fiscal year end. You'll also see the temporaries on here for fiscal '24. This is the estimated budget that is based around what we had for fiscal year '24 and the May submission of the five-year forecast. We make sure that that aligns because one thing leads to the next. So, this is how we try to make things make sense and constantly calibrate as we're going. However, this is all of our funds. This is Lakota as a whole, where this is the portion that's our five-year forecast that we spend so much time talking about. So, as you can see, the five-year forecast overall for Lakota makes up about 72, 73% of the overall Lakota budget. So, we have permanent improvements. We have, the cafeteria funds are separate. The 400 series are considered state grants. The 500s are considered the federal grants. I'll go back one, sorry. Federal grants. We have principals' accounts, sports, student activities. So, all of that makes up our overall Lakota budget. So, we work very hard to make sure that all funds are balanced, not just our general fund. Sorry about that. So, I kind of talked about this a little bit. We, the steps we have to get through our fiscal year and get into our next fiscal year is we'll finalize these appropriations for fiscal '23. We do that, as mentioned, at the fund object level. Then we have the temporary appropriations. Without a temporary appropriation, I do not have the authority to begin issuing checks for payments. So, as mentioned in the Finance Committee meeting, with a July 5th payroll, that would make things get extremely interesting if we couldn't get a budget approved. So, we don't want to do that. We want to make sure we get through the budget. And then we'll also see a permanent appropriation where we'll come through again at the, before the end of September, we'll come through with a permanent budget. I'd mentioned in a perfect world that I would love to be able to get to, we'll get in front of the five-year forecast so that work can lead to that work on our permanent appropriations coming in October. So, as mentioned, we will file all the reports with the county auditor. We also have the amended certificate of estimated resources. That's where county and our certificate of available balances, those aren't approved by the Board because those go for the budget commission at the county. That's how the county auditor's office will ensure that all government entities that are in Butler County are balancing budgets and making sure that they have funds. So, it's part of, part of revised code that we have to follow. And then, as also as mentioned, we will begin the process of fiscal '24 analyzing, seeing where we're at, seeing where we had good estimates, seeing where we didn't have good estimates, seeing where we need to put a little bit more work. I know that it seems like going into this year, one of the, coming into fiscal '24, one of the places that we're going to spend some more time on is going to be the purchase services because we had some, we had some one-time items that we want to make sure that we don't start trending for next year. So, we'll make sure we catch those. As we were in my office, Mr. Passage and Mr. Wesley were sitting in there and we spent some time diving into a few of these and saying, oh, wait, this wouldn't be for the following year and stuff. So, that's, that's good to do. Fiscal '23 takeaways. We have the 11th year of the balanced budget.
Wow.
Awesome.
It takes, it takes a lot of work. This, this year has been an emotional roller coaster for that balanced budget. I cannot say that enough. We also have the House Bill 33 coming. This is a biennial year. So, they're looking at our state funding for two years and then two years from now. So, in our five-year forecast, it actually has three, the five-year forecast we had in May will have three biennial budgets in it. So, that is, that makes things tricky there. We do have strong cash reserves. However, something that you will notice is last year we ended with 206 days of cash. This year, we ended with 203, but we balanced the budget. Anybody know why that could be?
Because our expenses went up.
Because the expenses go up. So, as, that's why we use the true, the true days cash to calibrate because as expenses go up, that shows us how many days we could stay open. So, as the budget naturally goes up, even if we balance, if it comes in really, really close with a budget our size, it will keep making that true days cash decrease for us. So, that is something to note, not to be alarmed by. That doesn't mean we have a problem. It's just that's a function of how that works. And then we will continue to align with strategic, with our strategic plan that we've been working on and making priorities because as we begin coming into a leaner budget, we want to make sure that we are aligning with the priorities of the Board, of the community, of our buildings, everybody. You know, we want to make sure that we're doing all we can to provide the best educational experience possible. So, that's key. Any questions?
Questions or comments for Mr. Zink?
He did such a good job. You don't have any questions?
Yeah.
As always, I appreciate you doing this because it makes it easier for me to understand your finances. You do a good job of that. So, I appreciate your and your team, all their hard work.
This year was so tough. I kept saying so many times it was so tough because I wasn't able, I wasn't able to get to looking at it near in the capacity that I was ever used to looking at it. And so, I appreciate all of the work that went on behind the scenes while I was doing, doing help in other ways. So, thanks again to the team.
Thank you and your, and your team as well. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
It proved your team could do it, so that was a, a good experiment.
We will know for certain when we get through that audit sometime around the end of December. But that's where, that's where it all ends up coming out in the wash for sure, but I have nothing but confidence that, that we are in a fantastic spot in all of our, our compliance checkpoints. We, we made sure that we hit all of those.
Mr. Zink, you mentioned some one-time items. Can you be a little more specific in that?
We had some one-time items with installations on the purchase services. It was some-
The portable classrooms that came in this year for Cherokee and for Van Gordon were one-time install costs that we won't see going forward. We'll have a small lease payment, but the, the cost for the install were quite large.
We had some security-
We had some security cameras too that were on a lease and that lease is going to be up mid-fiscal year, so that will go off the books from an operational standpoint as well.
Another thing that we're keeping eyes on is Mr. Passage has done a lot of work working on our copiers, which in schools, copiers are a big deal. We're looking at a little different methodology of how to work with our copiers. We've been leasing in the past. We are looking at doing a purchase to begin purchasing the fleet because if you do the lease, the lease is good for a five-year and then you, you're constantly in that. We think that there may be some, some operational savings that we can gain by purchasing machines that could last more than five years, but if they did not last more than five years, there's still savings just in five years purchase versus a lease due to we wouldn't have the financing costs. And we would be able to utilize some of our PI funds to do that, which would be outside of our general fund.
That'd be from technology, not-
Maintenance if we-
Yeah, the technology.
Not the facilities.
Mr. Wesley's constantly pointing at me about his technology budget there.
And maintenance on the copiers would be covered?
There'll be, the maintenance agreement would still be in place, so it's done per click charge.
Yeah, you have that either way.
So, that's the same. And we did lower that as well for all the fleet moving forward as part of this new contract as well.
Okay.
So, we're looking, we're looking at creatively making sure that, you know, we're meeting the needs, but is there a better way of us doing business as well? So-
We appreciate that. Other questions or comments?
I have, go ahead. I have a question about the cash reserve. There is a policy that says that the Board is supposed to dedicate the, we're supposed to have this much on hand and then the rest is supposed to kind of be dedicated, and you can probably speak more to this, to a certain, say, we, it's not just in there saying that we are going to spend this on this or we are saving this for this. Can you speak more to that?
We do. Are you speaking about the fiscal stabilization policy?
Yes.
Budget stabilization policy?
Yes.
So, what that is, is at the end of each year, we are able to do a transfer into a reserved account that could be set aside for a rainy day-
Right.
-should we need it. And then that would take a Board action to pull that money out and be able to use it. So, because of us having a balanced budget again, we will be able to do another transfer into that fund in July.
Well, so we have what is needed and required by law to, in, in the rainy day fund, but we have additional money in there that, from what I understand, we are supposed to dedicate it to something, saying like, oh, we're saving this. Is that be, would that be for the rainy day fund or are we supposed to dedicate it to, well, we're saving this money because we are potentially going to need to go to the community regarding a bond?
Oh, you're talking, you may be talking about-
No, she's talking about-
I think she's talking about the superintendent needs to present a plan.
A plan. When it goes over 150 days. That's what you're talking about, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, what that speaks to is, is when, if, if that number got to 90 days, then the superintendent and treasurer have to collaborate to then bring a plan to the Board on what this means, how we would do it. So, at that point, at 90 days, that's where that plan could be, here's the, here's the options that we have. One of those could be, how do you decrease expense? How do you increase revenue? You know, once we would get to that, that's something that we're constantly keeping an eye on. There is some language that talks about the superintendent plan above the 150 days. So depending on how our superintendent search goes, we would look at talking through that and seeing if there's plans that the board would, it would require board approval, but maybe if there'd be some plans that the board would like to see go into play.
Because we are currently not doing that correct. We do not have a plan in place.
I don't believe we have had one, no.
It's a superintendent and the treasurer collaborate and bring a plan to us.
And it could be as we're looking at the master facilities plans, there may be one-time projects or those kinds of things that we'd want to use.
And, but we're currently, and we haven't done that in the past. Have we done that in the past?
We, we haven't had that much money and we haven't been over the threshold for that long.
Not that I specifically remember.
Okay. How long have we been over the threshold, do you know?
I would have to dig deeper into it. I believe we've been-
But it's been a couple of years.
Based on the forecast, we have been over for a little while.
Okay. So the past couple of years, we have not done that. So I think maybe going forward, we should do that once we get a new superintendent or even an interim superintendent to be compliant with the policy if the board feels that that's what we need to do.
It is always good to follow your policies.
Yep. True that. And I think, and you've mentioned briefly the 11 years of the balanced budget, but, and again, you may not even know a ballpark. I'm just curious if you have a sense of how many districts in the state have accomplished that without additional revenue during that timeframe? Any, like, if you were to guess?
Well, I, I do know that one of the things that we did hear a lot of through our search process, through our interview process, is you hear a lot about levy cycle. A lot of districts talk levy cycle because there is a stereotype that in suburban districts, you will see a levy cycle because based on the wealth plans, the, the state funding may not keep up at the same rate as the inflation and the job market might appear. So for a district in our situation, I believe that we have done a tremendous job being fiscally responsible to stretch that as far as we've been able to. As far as how many actually do, I would have to wait until we crossed the, the actuals, when the actual forecast gets submit, submitted by the end of November, then I could do a data dive and pull that and try to get that. If, I'll write it down or I'll remember to try to get that and maybe compare it to, to size and structures.
I mean, it's not worth the time. It's just if it were a five-minute-
It's a very small percentage.
It's a very, yeah, small percentage.
Yeah.
And it is a good talking point.
Yeah, yeah. And it, it's been 10 years of since the last levy we passed, which is a long time for a district.
Twenty-eleven, yep.
Yeah, you'll, you'll hear a lot of districts talk about the three- to five-year levy cycle.
Right. The three- to five-year levy cycle is-
We haven't been since 2013 and we currently don't have one forecasted for the five-years on forecast. So that, that is good. Good.
And not to sound like the veteran member, but it was deficit spending every single year by millions and millions.
For many, many years.
That kind of meaning to them.
And I am so, so incredibly proud of the work that's been done to get to this point. I'm proud and happy for our community that we haven't had to go back to our taxpayers and I'm proud of our staff for those things that they've done too. And I also look at, you know, when we look at three biennial budgets in a five-year forecast and the roller coaster ride that every biennial budget is, it's, it has the potential for tremendous impact. You know, if our state funding gets cut, those kind of big situations. And I remember, I think it was 2015, we were projected to be the biggest loser in the state on the biennial budget. Do you remember that? $10 million was going to be cut annually and we had begun to climb back out of that hole that we were in. And so what might have taken other districts to their, to their knees, including us, we, we were prepared to get there. And I don't take those changes lightly at all, but I am thankful that that does not strike immediate levy conversation anymore when we have that because we've put those reserves aside and we can weather everything that happens out of Columbus. I shouldn't say everything, but most things that happen out of Columbus.
One of the, one of the things that Ms. Logan used to always kind of talk about was almost how passing the levy was like the rite of passage that she had. You know, she, she made, she got the levy passed and with all the work of everybody that went into that and they figured out the budgets. And I know that it was a real pride thing for her to be able to make that balanced budget stretch all the way through her tenure here. And so I, I almost feel like this was us keeping that legacy going for at least one more year. We're going one year at a time, but, but that really felt good to do that.
Five years at a time is good, Mr. Zink. So keep up that good work. It's, that's great news. Any further questions on the five-year forecast presentation? Sorry, fiscal year-end presentation?
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you to Mr. Zink and to his team. Board, let's move to action items, number seven, board policy second reads. I will take a motion to approve all of those policies that are attached.
So moved.
Thank you. Mrs. Casper, is there another second to that?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. D. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a statement. So again, as I repeated last time, I believe that Neola is another deceitful organization. These recommendation, recommendations are tainted and they have demonstrated that it, that they have an obvious political slant. So I will be voting no.
Any further discussion? Board, do you want me to read all of those policies?
No.
Thank you for that. All right. Without further discussion, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. D? Yes. Ms. Bodie?
No.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. We have no further board action for this evening, so we'll move to number eight, treasures recommendations. A, approve the minutes. B, approval of the monthly financial report. C, adopt the fiscal year 2023 final appropriations. D, adopt 2024 temporary appropriations. E, approve the fund-to-fund transfers. F, the motion to approve the enterprise zone compensation agreement with Republic Wire. And G, the motion to place district data on Ohio checkbook to be updated quarterly. This is quite a bit, so I think what we'll do is probably take these one by one if that's all right with everyone. So we'll take the approval of minutes first, please. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Mrs. Bodie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Casper. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Bodie?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. Approval of monthly financial reports. Mr. Zink, did you want to talk about those?
Yeah, this was the financial reports from April. As I got mixed up in the shuffle, I realized that I did not have the April ones on the agenda from before. So I went ahead and got that caught up. The June ones will be in the July meeting. So we, we already approved May at the last June meeting, so sorry about that.
It's all right. It's been a little hectic lately.
It has been a bit busy.
So I have a motion to-
I had, I also had a baby in there.
I know.
I'll take a motion to approve the monthly financial report for April 2023.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. D. Second.
Second.
Mrs. Schaefer? Thank you. Call the roll.
Mr. D? Yes.
Is there a discussion?
Yes. I just wanted to say that I am approving these because it's more like that, it's more an approval of the process of the reporting and what it takes to gather the information.
Okay.
Call the roll.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. C, I'll take a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2023 final appropriations.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Casper. Discussion?
Yes. So as it has come to my attention, it has come to my attention, as I looked through the administrative guideline manual, that I came across the information that the senior director of diversity and inclusion is no longer a position and we are not paying for that position. However, we are paying Ayesha Moore for a position labeled TSA diversity, which is a partial teaching position for diversity. And then there is money going to the Butler County ESC for Leah Aguilera. These two positions are part of the divisiveness in our Lakota School District and I believe that we, these positions need dissolved and we need to take a look at what areas should be reintegrated into Lakota. Two examples of these would be the support for military students and ESL, which is English as a second language classes, among others. But I, I am voting no because I do not approve of the expenditures on, on these two positions.
Further discussion?
Go ahead.
In our last diversity meeting, we did discuss all of the different tasks that those ladies do. And it is supporting, the role of the department is to remove all barriers so all students succeed. So I am proud of the work that they do and that they presented to us and thankful for that work and look forward to them continuing to eliminate barriers so all students can find success at Lakota.
Which includes ESL support.
Right. And I said that was a good thing.
Let's not do a back and forth, Mr. D. Anything?
I have another thought.
Mrs. Bodie?
I understand removing barriers and, and I think that is important. And I, and again, there are some of the things that I agree should continue. However, some of these programs are creating barriers for our students from learning and lowering our test scores and lowering our, our, they are creating diver, divisive, they're creating a divisive environment. They're also focusing on the wrong things that should, we should not be focusing on. And we can go into further discussion. And actually, I've said it in the past, how I feel about that. So we would have to review some of the past meetings, I think, to understand that.
Please direct it to us.
But-
Audience, please.
Again, I stand by my statement that they are creating barriers and we have data to support this. So if you refuse to see the data, that's not-
Audience, please. Did you have something further, Mrs. Bodie?
Well, I mean, I also have this part as well, so I'll go ahead and say it. SEL, so MTSS, I do not approve of that, that, the expenditures there as well. SEL and PBIS are underneath the umbrella of MTSS. This is called, MTSS is multi-tiered system and it treats all students as, as if they are victims of trauma. MTSS is another tool being used by advocates for mental health that negatively affects the emotional health of children and their grades. And again, I reiterate, are building barriers for student learning. So I do not support that expenditure.
Mrs. Casper, then I'll speak.
Lodi was created in 2015 and part of the job of Lodi, of removing barriers, there is a component on the report card that you can gauge that impact. It's the gap closure portion of the report card. So in 2015, before we started Lodi, our grade in that category was an F. In 2016, 17 school year, it was a C. In 2017, 18, a B. In 2018, 19, a B. It was not scored in 19, 20, or 2021 because of the pandemic and in 21, 22, it was a G and a B.
Student achievement is lower.
Mrs. Casper has the floor.
So that is, that is what the diversity department, Lodi, does. That is how you remove cognitive barriers to learning. It's closing the gap so that all students, all students get the opportunity to learn. So that data is-
I would also-
Mrs. Bodie, wait. Do you have something?
Yes. What Ms. Bodie is talking about is I used to have that kind of impression as well because it was coming from, I think, people that have, that don't have detailed information. When I did dive into the program itself, probably there were some of the things that were coming off to people which created some impression. But when I got in there, I didn't see any data to support those claims. And that does not mean we don't continue to look, look at it. If there's anything that is not there, and I said, that is there that is supported by data that we are not going to look into it. But all those things, they're just people's ideas. And if, if there are data that can prove, bring it forward, then we can look into it because that's what we're here to do, right? We analyze data and make decisions. So that's what my take on that. After the last meeting, which, when we had the detailed report that I requested, I remember on May 5th, a lot of things that I changed my mind about the program. And we're going to continue to look at everything that we are doing and where we spend our money. So data speaks for itself.
Mrs. Bodie, anything else?
So student achievement is down and our test scores have lowered over the past 10 years. So I don't understand, and please explain to me, how the board can consistently sit there and refuse to see the data that supports what I am saying, but only believes the data that supports their narrative. I think we're doing a disservice to our students and I really wish that you would listen to what I'm saying because I'm speaking truth. I'm speaking over data.
Audience, please.
And it's unfortunate that you choose to not listen.
Mrs. Casper?
I, I don't think that we're not listening. I think that you're, you have no data, student achievement being down and test scores being down, there is no correlation to this between the Lodi and diversity and equity and inclusion. And that, yeah, we, we all know that student achievement is a priority to us and that we need to raise our test scores and make sure that every student is learning to their full potential. That doesn't have anything to do with Lodi. It, it actually, Lodi, as I read, helps that. We're trying to educate all students. And because you teach a student positive behavior to help them when they are traumatized and when they are trying to learn is helping them learn. That is, it is not true that PBIS means they treat every child as if they have trauma. So wherever you're getting that information, it's not correct.
MTSS.
MTSS is, has, it's nothing to do with trauma. It's a multi-tiered support system. It's making sure that our students are getting all of the resources that they need to learn.
Mr. D?
There, there might need to be some work session on that sometime.
Yeah, I was, I was going like, from what, from what you said, I was trying to support it because the program give opportunity, because we have people coming from different backgrounds. So the opportunity that is given to them is to, to bring them all up together. And I think the program is going to even help more students succeed than against, I mean, than fair. So the data that we are looking for is if you have a specific data that is coming from that department that you think is, is hampering growth and, and that could be the reason why our students are not performing, that is the data we need to speak to, not just a vague, student's achievement is low due to Lodi or due to a particular, the program that is, that helps diversity. So as far as I'm concerned, it's even helping us more. Or maybe we should look more into it and see, maybe the students that are not performing well, that is the area where we need to put more attention and see where the gap is and cover and, 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 and close it.
I have something to say too.
All right. Go ahead, both of you. And then we're going to allow me a moment, then we're going to wrap it up and move on to another topic. So, Mrs. Bodie?
Okay. So I have the job description right here for multi-tiered system supervisor and it says train and support building administrators and teachers on MTSS implementation and evidence-based intervention practices on tier-one classroom pullout intervention.
Yeah, intervention.
Kelly?
Sorry.
Tier one. That's what I'm saying, tier one. And you're saying I'm, okay. Also, resource, it also says intervention resources for behavior, SEL, and diagnostic assessments and implementation of interventions. Why are our teachers being put in the, in the, in this organization? Why are they being put in a position where they are inter, they are intervening with our mental health, with our students? I think that is a psychologist's job. And this to me is going too far when it would be great if it was just focusing on math reading, writing. That's fine. But it's focusing on that, on the mental health of our students and I, and, and it's overreach. That's number one. And number two is when did we implement the Lodi program? Was that about 10 years ago, 2013?
2015.
Okay, so 2015. Our test scores have been going down since then. So that correlates with the focus. And I think we can all agree that our previous focus has been the Lodi and it has been diversity and equity and inclusion. And our grades are not improving and we can all agree that that was the focus of our last superintendent. So, so he is the one that implemented a lot of these programs. So again, the data does speak and you can't deny it.
Mrs. Schaefer?[1773.12] Mrs. Schaefer? Audience, please.
I think that there's a couple pieces here. First of all, part of the reason we do multi-tiered systems of support and some of the social emotional learning is because of a student, it's the hierarchy of needs. If a student's basic needs are not met, they cannot be open to learning. So data does support, if you look at educational best practices, that you have to have basic needs met before you can learn algebra. If I'm hungry because I haven't had breakfast or I've been up all night taking care of my baby sister, I am not going to be very receptive to algebra. And so trying to remove barriers to learning is critically important if we want our students to succeed in reading and writing and arithmetic.
That is not the job of a teacher.
Mrs. Bodie, you do not have a floor.
And then if you also look at testing, you'll see the significant correlation that districts have between their socioeconomic levels and the data on those test scores. Again, it's, we're going to continue to work to do better, but there is a high correlation between those two. And then the final thing is, if we do the same next year as we did this year, our grade goes down. So when we say we're not doing as well, we're actually increasing what our children are learning and what the expectations are, and those change every year. So we're also not even comparing apples to apples on the report card because the report card of 10 years ago is significantly different than the report card of today. But those benchmarks, as they should, we continue to expect more of ourselves. And so that also impacts how that data looks versus if you're looking at an exact data point versus an exact data point. So the community doesn't buy that.
Mrs. Bodie? I'm going to remind everyone that we are in the middle of the treasurer's recommendations and talking about appropriations. So I'm just going to make a couple of comments and then I'm going to move us along, if that's all right with the rest of the board, okay?
Yeah.
First of all, I think there's definitely a need for us to have perhaps a board presentation on some, what acronyms mean and how those are utilized in the classroom. A multi-tiered support system means that you are looking at students, don't, they're not all out of a cookie cutter. They all have individual needs. Personalized education means we are looking at those individual needs. And as I mentioned, not too long ago, when we talked about the setup for the Diversity Council, it's about students' diverse needs. That's what we're talking about. Whether it's their backgrounds or other factors that have influenced those needs, that's what matters because we can't provide an education without consideration of that. A child with a learning disability doesn't necessarily have the same needs as a child that has been through a traumatic childhood situation. Every child that's receiving MTSS does not go through trauma, care. But some do. And not recognizing that influence on a child of getting them, as Mrs. Schaefer said, to a place where they can learn, it matters. That's why MTSS matters. So if you hear about trauma care being a part of MTSS, it's a consideration just like a learning disability and writing would be, or a reading deficit. Whatever those pieces are, you need to consider the individual child. And if we don't do that, we don't improve our report card. We don't improve their learning. We don't improve their achievement without considering what those barriers are. Nope, I'm going to finish. PBIS is a positive behavior intervention. That means classroom management, that's what it boils down to, and being able to create an environment where kids can learn. Again, if you have a child that's been through trauma and needs that informed care, you'll have to deal with that. That's a part of it. But it doesn't mean that, it doesn't mean, I'm, I'm just headed in such a weird place here with this whole thinking. I'm very uncomfortable with bringing forward two staff members and let's say eliminate those staff members and naming them by name. That is, that makes me more uncomfortable than I can possibly say. I think Mr. D made an excellent point about, in our meeting on May 5th, we had asked for, tell us the return on our investment. What are these staff members doing? Are they doing something that justifies the cost of having them do the work that they do? And they talked about dealing with military kids. They talked about taking English as a second language kids up to Miami, Miami University campus to go through a process with something these kids never even thought about going to college. And by the time they finished that visit, they said, I'd like to come back here and I'd like to apply because no one had told them, you can do this. They had a different need. The work that those two staff members do, I think, is important in reaching kids that have diverse needs. We have to consider that. I will also say that that department is going to roll under Student Services, which I think is a very appropriate place for it. They're providing services to students and families, that's what they do. Again, I'm super uncomfortable with having brought those names forward and I cannot disagree with you more on what those staff members contribute to our students. I'm going to finish.
And I just want to clarify.
No, I'd like to finish.
I just want to clarify, I said positions.
So.
You called them by name.
I also would like to say, I would also like to say, we specifically set up. If I could finish, please, ladies. Mrs. Bodie? We created the Community Diversity Council so that we would have representation around the table of our community, including all these kind of issues that you continue to bring forward. We're bringing the community's voice into this work. We're bringing the community's voice into this process. Mrs. Bodie, we're going to have a work.
And so you want to eliminate the minorities' voice, is that what you're saying?
Mrs. Bodie, you're out of order. And speaking to the audience is not appropriate.
They need to be quiet.
Mrs. Bodie? We are going to talk about a board presentation to make sure all of this terminology and the acronyms are understood, what their purpose is and how it supports our students. I invite you to please submit those questions, and very specific questions. You have a right to have your questions answered. But can we do it respectfully toward our staff, please? I'm going to move us on now.
I would also like to say.
I'm going to move us on.
We're done.
I have a motion on the floor to adopt the fiscal year 2023 financial appropriations, and I have a second. Without further discussion, please call the roll.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
No.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. Board will move to, I apologize for my impatience. We'll move to number D and adopt a motion for fiscal year 2024 temporary appropriations. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer, do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. D. Mr. Zink?
Discussion, please.
Mr. Zink is going to present to us first. Mr. Zink?
This is the temporary budget. We will come back to this budget in September for a permanent appropriation. And then, as we did just a few moments ago, we will have a final at the end of the next fiscal year. So this is the beginning for fiscal '24.
Thank you. Discussion.
I think that it's obvious that the other board members do not truly understand these programs and are regurgitating what they have been told.
Further discussion?
Can you please do your job as a president and keep the public quiet?
Can you please do your job as a board member and be respectful?
I am, thank you.
We are going to move on. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
No.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. We'll move to number E, approve fund-to-fund transfers. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer, do I have a second?
I have a second to approve the fund-to-fund transfers.
Thank you, Mrs. Bodie. Mr. Zink?
Yeah, there is a new fund-to-fund transfer this year that was to move money out of a defunct account that we have for our old fully insured insurance accounts. You just by law have to move that over to the general fund before we can transfer that over to our self-insured account. So that you will see as new. This includes the transfers for a lot of items that were part of the 2013 levy promise. Stuff like athletics, student activities bans, we have club cards so that we can control the costs, keep that down so more kids can participate instead of having variable costs throughout, so.
And that reduces our costs for our families.
That is correct. Yeah, that, that's part of the goal since to make sure that it's more manageable. And just like a lot of other things that we do, we want to have as much student participation in as many ways as possible because as, as a lot of the staff would say, that if you can get the students participating in things and everybody has a wide variety of different interests, that it makes for a better building. So we're glad we can bring those barriers down a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Zink. Are there questions or comments?
No, I, I, that was a, I just want to comment how that was a great addition when we did that with club cards. I mean, and having had a parent, three kids in high school at the time. You know, every club required a fee and so once we went to the club cards, it really did help more. We did see an uptick in the high school when I was there of kids participating in clubs.
It does, it, it doesn't just help manage that as well. It's, there's, it turns into a lot of soft costs that go into managing these things that ends up being administrative red tape and waste as well. So it's something that, not to get ahead of ourselves, but this is our last year for the ester funds covering our student fees. That's the last year we can do that. So I've already talked in the exec team meetings with curriculum of ways of, maybe we could look at doing a more universal club card-ish type thing so that it's more manageable at our building so that we can have our staff doing more things besides charging and feeing people. You know, there's, there's smarter ways of doing business that I hope we can try to accomplish.
I appreciate you look at being more efficient, you're looking at being more efficient with that, Mr. Zink. And I agree with you, that definitely was a good idea for our families. There is data to support when you look at student achievement data. Kids that are engaged in one activity at least in a, in a school are more engaged in their learning. And I think that that's really important, that we consider that as an important role for us to provide as well. Any further comments on E? I have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. Move to number F, the motion to approve the enterprise zone compensation agreement with Republic Wire. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer, do I have a second?
Second, sorry.
Did you want to think about that?
No, I just was trying to read my computer screen, it's very light.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion and a second. Mr. Zink?
This is the third abatement we, we had with Republic Wire. This is for an addition of a warehouse space. They did say that it was projected to increase jobs in our community by 40 to 50 jobs. So being business friendly, that is very important to us to make sure that we continue to have growth in the, in the business community. This abatement would give us 50% of what we would have been due over a seven-year period, so around $85,000 additional dollars on a roughly $20 million facility. So keeping that within our community, I believe, is a good move for us.
I think it's important to support our local businesses as well. Is further discussion or comments, anyone?
I have a question on that.
Go ahead, Mr. D.
What is the cost on us?
The cost on us, in theory, would be the other half. It's, it's giving them a tax abatement so that it helps their operation.
Okay, let's put numbers there, let me understand, like.
So if we're receiving 50%, we'll be receiving $85,000 per year instead of double that. So it, but it is new revenue. It is new revenue, but it's not all, at the eighth year, it would become all new, full revenue.
So we're receiving something, but not as much as we would have if we didn't agree to.
That's correct. And it also impacts Butler Tech as well. They would get 50% as well. It's just their mileage is smaller than ours, so theirs isn't as large as our $85,000.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. Board will move to G, the motion to place the district data on Ohio checkbook to be updated quarterly. The chair will make the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. D. Mr. Zink?
We've spent some time talking about this in both community engagement as well as finance committee. I thought it was important to put on there the updated quarterly. This will be the first, first time for us getting the information in and going to live with that. And then we'll be able to calibrate and see where we're at moving forward. I wanted the quarterly so that the community would kind of have a feel for what to expect. There is nothing worse, in my opinion, than wondering why information is stale if it's not necessarily stale. So we'll, we'll try to stay on that quarterly and that way everybody kind of knows the expectations there.
Are we starting this quarter or the new fiscal year?
We'll begin, we'll begin getting the information in and then we'll go live hopefully sometime end of July. But then the next update from there would be at the end of September.
Okay.
This is something that I have really been hoping that we would do for many years now because I think it's a transparency, we're calling it a transparency portal, but it truly is. And I agree with you, Mr. Zink, that there may be additional questions as we start this process. But giving people the opportunity to go and answer those questions themselves and see the data themselves, I think, is a, is a good step forward. So further discussions, comments, or questions?
With the year, with the year we've had, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I was going to say. With the, with the year we've had, it may look like a decrease in public records because we have had a, a huge public records year this year.
We definitely have. Let's hope that it assists with that. Mrs. Bodie?
We haven't made a motion yet and I would like to have discussion.
Mrs. Bodie, I made the motion.
We made the motion and we're seconded.
There is discussion, that's what we're doing.
Okay, thank you, sorry, thank you for the reminder. So regarding the Ohio checkbook, I am okay with using this for transparency purposes. But I feel that if it does not deliver enough limpidity for the community, then I believe that we can look at other programs that will adequately deliver the expected information. I'm apprehensive about this only because of feedback that I've received, but I'm okay with this decision and I think we can, you know, come back to the table later on if we feel that, like I said, the community is not able to get the information that they are looking at. But I'm thankful that we're doing, that, that we're doing this.
Other comments? Mr. Zink, do you want to speak for just a moment about why you chose this particular portal tool?
For a couple reasons. One, it will reduce the, it will reduce the legwork on our end at this moment because they already have the chart of accounts built out. We also have somebody in-house that helped develop the very first chart of accounts for the Ohio checkbook and Mr. Oskley, so he's well-versed on this platform. The other, the other platform that we looked at, not only was it going to cost in the neighborhood of, north of $20,000 a year, this is a free option, as well as the other option that would have cost, would have required us to develop it. It would have, we would have been the first school in Ohio, public school on that platform. So with the year we've had, the thought of being cutting-edge on that right now, just, I don't think we have the capacity, to be very honest. We, we would have to, we would have to redistribute some of our, our human resources that we have to be able to, to accomplish that. And I would hate to put something out that was half-baked.
Absolutely. All right, is there any further discussion or comments? Mr. D? All right, would you please call the roll?
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Board will move to Superintendent Recommendation Action Items, number nine, approved personnel items and donations. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer and Mrs. Casper. Mr. Zink? Or Mr. Passard, do you have anything on this?
No, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Mr. Zink?
On the, we do have miscellaneous rates of pay. This is one of, one of the ways of having board approval, which we need to process payments for things that aren't captured in policies or bargaining agreements. So this is something that helps perform some of the tasks, some of the athletics, coaches, not coaches, I'm sorry, but like referees, the, the people that actually make these events go as smooth as they go. So this is what gives us the authority to be able to process those payments and keep things moving versus having a personnel agenda that would be flooded with these items. So it's, it's kind of a proactive approach to keep things moving quickly and allow our staff to receive payments for, for duties that they do, or members of the community.
And we do that annually.
What's that?
We do that, we approve this annually.
Yeah, that is on there.
All right, any further comments, questions? Mrs. Bodie?
Can we please separate A from B?
We already have a motion and a second. So I think we probably should have done that before we had a motion and a second.
Well, you're motioning, motioning to discuss this and we're discussing it. And my, okay, I make a motion to separate, I am in the original motion and I make a motion to separate A from B.
Is there a second? Hearing none, the motion dies.
Still have a discussion.
Go ahead.
Okay. So as we heard Ms. Emily Jackson speak this evening, I think it is important that we start getting exit interviews. getting exit interviews, and I would like to, and, and another issue, another thing is we do have some issues in, in our district, and I think I would like to request an outside company to do an HR depart, an HR audit of the department, HR department, and for the district to address concerns with exit interviews. Board, and I, and I come to you, are we going to address the opportunities in our school and work towards improving, or is the rest of the board going to continuously play politics and constantly ignore valid suggestions and feedback when presented? The future of the district is in our hands, and many feel that the rest of the board is working against the district. And I think, again, there are reasons people are leaving, and we need exit interviews because we need to find out what their reasons are. Now, if it's just because they disagree with me politically, sorry, it's not going to change. But if it is something that we can do as a board to help improve the, the district, then I think we should be aware of this, and I think we should do so.
So my understanding is that we have actually implemented some kind of an exit interview process. Mr. Vogelman is not here tonight to speak to that, so I do not think this is the appropriate moment to discuss that further without him being here. I also think as we're in the middle of hiring a new superintendent, some of those might be valid questions to bring forward with the new superintendent. Mrs. Schaefer?
On the donation piece, I just wanted to note that we have the donations, not only for this month, but for the running total for the year since it's the end of June, and we have nearly $600,000. So
Just stunning.
Thank you to the generosity of our community. A lot of that is our parent organizations within each building that do so much to support our staff and our kids in each of those buildings, so thank you. And I doubt that that even covers it all. We try to capture it all, but I'm sure there's even additional donations that happen, so we couldn't do it. It makes the school special with all that additional support.
Thank you for highlighting that, Mrs. Schaefer.
I would also like to add something.
Mrs. Bodie?
I would like to vote for the donations, but since the board did not second my amendment, I will not be able to vote to approve the donations because they refuse to acknowledge my motion to amend the previous motion. So I do not want people to think that I disapprove of the donations because I am very thankful for them, and thank you for your hard work.
Anything further?
I think it would be really neat if you could capture the volunteer time on the donation.
Absolutely.
Because that's, this is the monetary, and
Right.
The time would be astronomical for the community.
And that's highlighted every year with our Barbasu Awards and ceremony, and I don't think that begins to touch the level of involvement. It has to be a strong partner, partnership with our parents for our kids to be successful. So we have a motion and a second for number nine. Without further discussion, would you call the roll?
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. Bodie.
No.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes. Board will move to closing comments, number 10. Mrs. Bodie, we'll start with you.
I would like to point out that those who have read the Bible and understand that it says we are all different and unique, understand this concept. Diversity in the current climate of the education system is divisive. This is obvious to the community and the students at Lakota and people across the nation and worldwide. It is said that with diversity and inclusion, everyone should have a seat at the table. But voices in the district are silenced when they disagree with a certain narrative and who have a difference of opinion, and that includes board members. So you say you want diversity and inclusion, well, your actions speak louder than words, and you do not.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Again, I, I don't believe that that characterization of diversity is what we're experiencing if you speak with our students and how they're understanding this and the work that's being done within our buildings to be inclusive of all. And when we talk about diversity of thought at this board table, I think if we counted minutes spoken, you would find that you are well-represented in sharing your thoughts at meetings. As we enter the summer, I know some of our buildings are closing their offices for a short period of time in order to spend time with their families and get a brief respite. So enjoy that time, recharge, refresh. It's a challenging time in education. It's challenging when buzzwords become politicized versus simply everyone trying to work together for the betterment of kids, which is what I believe our staff is doing every day. I'm thankful for their work during the school year, and I'm thankful for their work during this time to continue to approve, improve student achievement and meet our goals of meeting every child where they are.
Ms. Casper?
Yes, the staff works over the summer, even when the teachers are off. I know that they take time with their families and, but I also know that they're still preparing for the next school year, and that they're coming in on Wednesdays when there's the voluntary, voluntary time that they can come in and meet with other teachers in their same grade band. I know that a lot of them are doing that. So again, our staff is amazing, and I'm thankful every day for them and for what's going on in the buildings. And I know that this distraction isn't trickling down to the buildings. Our teachers are still working hard to teach every student and make sure they have what they need to succeed. So thank you for that. And just a side note that I have a brain, and I read a lot of things, and I don't just regurgitate what I am told. I know what I'm talking about, and because it's not what you agree with, I think it's disrespectful and rude for you to say that we don't have a brain and that we're just regurgitating what we hear. Because I do.
We're saying we have a brain.
You're right. You didn't say that, but you did say we just regurgitate what we hear and that we don't know what we're talking about.
And read.
Mrs. Casper, Mrs. Bodie.
Said that.
Closing comments, not closing debate. Thank you. Mrs. Casper, before starters.
I just wanted to point that out because it's offensive.
Mr. D?
I know this week we've been so busy in the past couple of weeks with the superintendent search. I want to thank fellow board members that despite all the roadblocks and all the distractions that we have, we made a very good success in this so far because we narrowed down to two. But I also want to, as we are recognizing each other, I want to also remember Andrea Longworth, who also spent some time supporting us as we went through the superintendent search. Ms. President, I want to thank you for your leadership because you have done a tremendous work in trying to put us together to, to be where, where we are today because if not for your good leadership, I'm not sure if we'd have been here right now. Your vice, I know how much time extra that I have to, I have to be called from my business into a lot of things, but I know you've been running day and night on this. I want the community to know that there are a lot of commercial issues that we had that we realized that it's time to pull the community in and being engaged in areas that have been misunderstood. The first one is curriculum. Now we have curriculum advice community coming from the community. Now we have Lakota Community Diversity Council. It's another opportunity that is given back to the community to be engaged and involved in the decisions that we as board members have to make. We have the Business Advisory Board, which is also coming, I mean, committee, which is also coming from the community. So I want the community to know that we have a one dynamic board right now that is engaging you in the decisions that we have to make. We need your advice so that we can succeed. I know the kind of perception people had about Lordi, but we're not only the ones making decision now, the community is involved. I never knew before. I used to have those kind of perceptions as well until when I made, asked questions, give me a return on investment. I've seen what it is. So we need to educate the community more instead of maybe throwing more gas into burning fire. With that being said, Adam, thank you, you and your team. This is your 11th year, and we have a balanced budget. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Mr. Passarge, comments on your first night at the table?
Of course.
Can you tell a joke?
Yeah, no jokes, no jokes. Just reflecting back on some of the conversation, I think it's pretty outstanding from the leadership that we've had over this past several years that if you enrolled here as a kindergartner, as a parent, that these parents have never gone through a levy cycle, and they won't when they graduate. So if you think about it from that perspective, that is pretty outstanding that we've been able to do that for a while.
Wow.
That's one cool thing. Another thing I want to reiterate too is comments made by Mr. Zink, Mr. Schaefer, Ms. Casper, everybody about the work that goes on during the summer. You know, being an operational leader, you know, our teams are out here cleaning, we're feeding students over the summer, getting buildings ready. We have people in the central office on payroll, technology teams are out there. The work never stops, and I really appreciate the entire teams out there continuing to do the work so we can have a successful school year each year. And lastly, I just want to thank Mr. Vogelman, I think, for allowing me the opportunity to fill in tonight. But really, it's a, it's an honor to do it on behalf of the entire exec team because any one of our executive leaders could sit up here and do an outstanding job, and I'm just the one that drew the short straw perhaps tonight. So I appreciate my team and everything that goes on. Thank you.
And you handled yourself well. Thank you. Mr. Zink?
To echo what Mr. Passarge said, the operational side, the, the business side, we are the busiest when the kids are not in the buildings. So by the time we get back to the opening day, we will always look really, really beat up, and everybody else looks so refreshed. So, so we get our vacations maybe in September. I wanted to give a shout-out and congratulations on retirement to Sharon Mays in the back of the room. When I, when I was brand-new to the district, this is my seventh year now, and when I was brand-new, Sharon took me on a tour of the district and thought I was crazy for wanting to take a tour with her and Ms. Moore. It was, it was a fun, fun trip around the district, got me out of work for a little bit. She's pulled some pranks on me over the years. I've always tried to be helpful, even, even when she was pranking me, but we always had a great working relationship, and I appreciate Sharon. I will miss Sharon. She always made me feel welcomed, so thank you, Sharon, and congrats on your retirement. I also want to thank everybody in the treasurer's office because of all of the work that they have done to help keep me going. It has been a rough year for me overall with more than just Lakota, with having a baby and challenges and everything that's happened, so thank you to all of them. Thank you, thanks to Darian, my assistant, for being my right-hand man, so I appreciate that. Also, I want to give a thank you to all of the candidates that put in and showed interest for our superintendent position. It's a tough time right now for all superintendents and to think about new jobs, and so I really appreciate that, and I appreciate all the community feedback that, that they gave. Everybody took time out of their schedule to come to the meetings we've had or come to meet the candidates and provide feedback to, to help steer a very difficult process. So we do appreciate that. And I also finally would just like to say goodbye to fiscal year '23. And welcome fiscal year '24. I am hopeful for an exciting new year and one that's hopefully a little bit slower than what '23 was, so.
Maybe we could take exciting out of that?
What's that?
Maybe we could take exciting out of that?
Yeah. Yeah, hopefully, yeah, we're, I, I'm excited for a new year, a new chapter, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Zink. Many of the things that I'm going to say have already been said, but they're no less important for me to be able to say them, so. Mrs. Mays, before you depart, we would appreciate you sharing some of those pranks with us so that we can continue. Again, as Mr. Passarge noted, the work that goes on over the summer to get our buildings back up to speed and make sure that they're ready for our students to come in is so important. And I know there's security work going on, there's, there's a number of improvements that are happening, so thank you to the entire team and to you for leading that effort. Mr. Zink, excellent job.
Thank you.
Excellent job. That balanced budget does, does lots of good things for my heart. Thank you for the good work on that, and thank you, everyone's involved in that process. I am so proud of the fiscal record that we've established over the last, I would say, since 2011 when we started. We had to make some very difficult cuts, very difficult cuts, but I think we brought back things that were important for our students and our families and done that in a fiscally responsible way and still managing to maintain what we need to. So I'm so glad that we're able to weather the storms that Columbus throws at us. Thank you for that. Thank you also, as you said, to the candidates that reply to all those that were interested in becoming part of our team. We will be keeping the community informed. The board's going to continue the work to do what we need to do to find the next leader. And as we take those steps, we'll inform you through our normal channels. You're welcome to sign up for notifications on our website. You can go in there and ask to be put on the email list. We'll also put that out through our social media and through the regular media outlets. Mr. D, thank several people who have been involved, but I want to say thank you to even, even more. Mrs. Longworth, Mr. Passarge, Mrs. Fuller, Mrs. Betcher. The entire executive team has done a great job of being part of the process, and we, we did a bus tour with, with a few of our candidates so that the executive team would have a chance to meet them and ask questions themselves and kind of show off our district a little bit, and really appreciate everybody taking time out to do that. It was a great day to get to know them a little bit better, and I think to show what's special about Lakota. So with that being said...
Can I add one more thing? Sorry to interrupt, since this is the financial meeting.
Yep.
I, I want to also thank Ms. Fuller for all the work she's done this year to help me out. She has been a tremendous help on helping get the financial message out there, and I've said many times, I wish some, sometimes it would be sent in an email so me and Betsy could sit down together and she could make it sound better than I can. So she has been a huge help. The Financial Prospectus, if you have not received one yet, they did go out, I think I received mine at my house this week, I believe.
I got mine last week.
So if you haven't received that yet, keep an eye on your mail because those are going out in Ms. Betcher, Ms. Betcher and Ms. Fuller.
And I was just about to say, with that being said, don't forget to look for our financial information.
Sorry I interrupted you. I thought you said, I'm looking, I thought you were going to say I'm looking for an adjourn.
No, you were thinking that, but I wasn't quite there yet.
But yeah, I, they, they helped pull something off that I could have never pulled off on my own this year, so thank you. Thank you for that, too. Sorry.
It takes, it takes a good team to make it all happen. Lots of work on everyone's part. With that being said, I am now looking for a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mrs. Bodie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Call the roll.
Ms. Bodie.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Hold on. 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 Hold on.